We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Twyla, the roll call.
Counselor Bowie.
Here.
Counselor Bickford.
Yeah.
Counselor Cody.
Here.
Counselor Pomalow.
Here.
Counselor Lund.
Here.
Counselor Mason.
Here.
Counselor LaRicheau.
Here.
All right, and our first order of business?
Is under the public hearing, charter amendments.
All right, this is an opportunity for anyone who wants to speak on the proposed charter amendments, if you'll step up to the podium and state your name, if you have anything you'd like to say on that, before we move to a vote. All right, anyone from the audience who wants to speak on charter amendments? Oh, sir, right there.
I read through the eight charter amendments just today, actually. I'd heard about a couple, but one in particular raises questions. I don't know what is good or bad, but I want to share with you the concerns it raises for me, having been a member of the charter commission itself. When we created the charter, that charter gives a whole lot of legislative power to the elected council, because that's what a council system does. But there are balances built in, there are referendums for a budget that can be initiated, there are ordinance initiations that people can create themselves, and there's the recall provision. The recall is a pretty powerful right, and it contains some balances. It has a petition requirement equaling 15 percent of the last gubernatorial election. That's so that a small minority can't go in and do damage all on their own. And the vote has to be 30 percent total of the last gubernatorial election, again, to prevent inappropriate work by a small minority. Even if a person's removed by that process, they can, they're allowed to rerun, so there are quite a few checks and balances in that whole system. The proposal in, that's under the amendments proposed as number eight, goes quite a bit beyond that provision, and I honestly am not sure whether it is good or bad. It talks about basis, that part I agree with. You are better defining what a person or group would have to put forward as reasons for advocating for a recall of an elected official, an unlawful act, improper execution of a lawful act, and failure to perform a required act. Maybe there should be more, I'm not certain. The two parts that kind of trouble me are the external review and the review by the ethics panel, because both of them appear to suggest that that outside review is going to determine the rightness or wrongness of those reasons. The terms, there are three terms being used there, and they're not interchangeable. Sufficiency, which basically means that the language that's there is what's required for a petition. Validity is a loaded word. It can mean simply that the language that's there is appropriate for a petition. It can also mean rightness and wrongness, and that somebody is supposed to determine the correctness of the statements. Is the person guilty or not guilty before it even goes out to an election? That's the part that's troubling, simply because I don't know how, it's sort of like giving the external review person the same process and requirements of a court of law. That, I think, is probably an unmanageable task within the timeframes of 21 days or even There's a, an appeal to the ethics panel. Again, it puts the ethics panel in position of appearing that is trying to determine the rightness or the wrongness of the accusations, guilty or not guilty. That's what it sounds like. That raises the same troubling concerns. Can you do that, given the often very subjective nature of accusations that are made? There's a court procedure, there's a council review, there's a public hearing. All of those things are going to lead to two kinds of perceptions. One is a pro. It's there to protect against unfair and unfounded accusations, because those can certainly happen, and they can be very hurtful, not only to the incumbent person, but to their families and to the whole town, a whole lot of damage can be done. A con perception is that it's being put there as an obstacle to the citizen initiative right. And I think both sides are taking a correct interpretation from their point of view. What I'm concerned about is that the process becomes the center or the object of the controversy rather than the substance itself. Misconceptions can happen. For example, suppose that it goes out to an outside reviewer, and the reviewer reviews it with a context of validity, meaning that it's proper language, and says, yes, this is a valid document. An awful lot of voters are going to interpret that as guilty, and you're sending them to the polls with a misconception of guilt about what is said, instead of correct statements forming a correct petition. I'm not sure that's at all clear. So the final question becomes, is this proposal better than what we already have? I think the language about basis is probably pretty good, and I like the idea of the, the public hearing. I think that can serve very well. I really think this amendment is, if it's put forward, it needs a whole lot more explanation and clarification, because it's so complex, I don't see two people having the same interpretation of it if they were talking on the street. That can be really dangerous territory. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on that issue? All right, seeing none, we will close that public hearing and go on to our next item.
Is under audience participation. At this time, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward.
All right, Mr. Fillmore, if you'd like to take the podium.
Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. At the last meeting, a counselor mentioned he was not happy about the comments written in blogs about the council and counselors. Well, let's look at this for a minute. The people cannot talk about personnel items at public meetings. The people cannot criticize the council at meetings. The people are restricted to when they can comment on agenda items at meetings. The council totally ignores people's emails or public comments. The minutes of the meeting do not match the video. Exactly where else do we, the people, have to voice our concerns and opinions when this council has neither, either eliminated or restricted all other avenues? I've chosen to voice my opinions and concerns on the Lisbon Report and the Lisbon News. This is unfortunate, because these blog sites are read all over the world, and I first tried to confine my opinions to within this council chambers. The council has left us with no other recourse but to utilize blogs. This council created the situation, and will have to live with it until freedom of speech is restored at these meetings, and counselors again value our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. And I can say that I do value your comments. All right, if you'd like to, okay, I'll let you speak first, then you.
Trudy, do you know, 420 Ridge Road? How many of you have a dog? And do you value that dog? Let me tell you what happened on September 11th. There were two stray dogs running in my neighborhood, and they crossed my property, they went on to the next door neighbor's property. Just a few minutes later, we saw blue lights up the street, two houses down. We could see an outline of a dog laying on the road. We knew at that point one of them had been hit by a car. The neighbor called the police department, the police officer responded, was told that animal control was on vacation. They sent an individual to the site. The individual said, "The dog is dead. I don't want it. What are you going to do with it?" "Roll it off into the ditch." That dog laid in the ditch for 24 hours. And I guess my real problem is, I have talked to Wendell Strout, the animal control officer in Lewiston, and he told me that he was covering for Jeff Cooper during that time, and he never got a phone call. So what, what is the protocol for handling something like that?
Want to speak to that, Stu?
Yeah, I could speak to that. The protocol is if a call comes into dispatch, and the animal control officer is on vacation or can't get to it, they are automatically supposed to call the next person in line, which should have been, should have been Wendell Strout, if he's on backup for us. That should have happened.
And I guess, why didn't that happen?
I can't answer that question. I can certainly look into it and find out how dispatch handled that.
I would appreciate it, because this individual that was called is, from my understanding, where our stray animals are kept, leaving a dead animal on the side of the road for 24 hours is, you know, is inhumane. It's, and it's clearly in violation of the animal ordinance that the town of Lisbon has. And I would really appreciate somebody looking into this.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll definitely try to get to the bottom of why that happened. All right, take the podium.
Hello, my name is Deb Wagner, and I live in Lisbon Falls. This is the third year that I've served on the Moxie Festival Committee, and I want to, I want to thank all of you for your support of the festival, and you're going to hear more later on in Scott's report. But just as somebody who's recently come to the committee, I really want to thank the people on who built up this festival, namely Sue and Toby and Frank. Andres Scoggan, Chamber of Commerce, I'm sure I'm going to, and these are just the people that I know. I mean, Sue and Toby welcomed, I've only four years in town, and they welcomed me into the inner circle, and they valued my input into the committee, and so I really, you know, want to thank them. And Frank Anisetti taught me how to drink moxie, and, you know, and that's a true experience, but in any case, you'll hear more about this later, but since this is the time the audience can speak, I wanted you to know that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to everyone who's served on that in any way, in that making that festival what it is. It's a big help to our whole town. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak?
Dorothy Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. Might not have been necessary for me to speak now, but this is my only opportunity, so I shall. Further on down in the order of business, CMP pole permit, Houston and Main Street. It's for the benefit of the local business. I'm wondering, who is paying for this pole to be installed?
CMP, we don't pay for that.
Okay. Now, is there going to be an ongoing cost for, is the, the street light and so forth?
I can't tell you if they're putting a street light up or they're just running power to his area. I'd have to look more carefully at the permit, but I can't ima, if he's going to have a light put up, he has not gone through the proper channels. This is strictly a pole permit, from my understanding.
The, the police department has been at the request of the town manager and the council going through town, and there's a report further on about the streetlights, et cetera, et cetera. And it was my understanding that there is supposed to be a street light at each intersection, so that was one of my
That's correct.
...questions as well, so I guess you've answered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak to the public? Take the podium and state your name and where you live.
Good evening, the council. Very quickly, my name is John Silvestri. I'm a resident of Lisbon Falls. I have been for about 35 years or so, and I've also been a member of the Moxie Festival organizing committee for 25-plus years. And so more of the long term of the following up and the short term that you heard about earlier from Deb. I just wanted to take a second to thank the council for support of the Moxie Festival the last two years, and the town manager, and the town itself. The festival has been, as you'll hear in more detail, for the first time in many years, in fact, I think I can say, about the festival, its pluses, minuses, and what it does for the town, from Scott Benson. But I'd like to let you know and remind you that it's been a valuable part of the community for many years. It has many peripheral benefits to the town, and the fact that the town picked it up from the chamber, and from Toby and Sue, is, is to be congratulated. And it's a festival that will continue, I think, to do a lot for the town, and your continued support is, is very much, very much appreciated. So I guess that's it, and thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. And the next item, Twyla?
Is under consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed for discussion?
Seeing none, Order 2011-173 to approve the minutes of July 19, August 16, 23:30, and September 6, 2011, to set the polling hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The locations, in Ward District 1, Superintendent's Office Building and the gymnasium. Ward or District 2, MTM Community Center Gymnasium. To set the registrar hours, typically, they'd be November the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 7th during regular office hours, and on Election Day during the hours the polls are open. The casting of absentee ballot times at the polls at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., and 8:00 p.m., and approve a liquor license for the left-hand club.
So move.
Second that.
All those in favor? And opposed? All right, motion passes, and so, next item, Twyla?
If there's no objections, the chairman would like to move the item to other business, Moxie Festival Committee presentation. Scott Benson?
Go ahead, Scott. Bring you up to the beginning, so our people don't have to wait around.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council. Always good to be with you folks. On behalf of the Moxie Festival Planning Committee, I'm really happy tonight to present a final report, and I believe our town clerk has shared copies with you, and you have those in front of you. Present to you a final report on the 2011 Moxie Festival. As you know, we had a pretty good Moxie Festival this year, and we're real proud of that, and I think everybody, all the stakeholders of town ought to be proud of that. And we want to wrap that up by reporting to you, and reporting to all the stakeholders of Lisbon through you, about, you know, what we did, what we spent, what we raised. And we want to do this for accountability's sake, and we also want to do this to help everyone understand because, excuse me, because we still learn, even as we're out doing our work, that not everybody fully appreciates everything that goes into this great community institution, and so we thought this would be a great opportunity to do that. So it's a, you know, as you can tell from the, the report, it's about 21 pages, we got a, a long story to tell. I'm going to try to make it as brief as possible, so I'll just walk through the report really quickly. On page four, you'll see the members, the current members of the Moxie Festival Planning Committee, and some of whom join us this evening. John Silvestri, Deb Wagner, Counselor Mason, invaluable member, Chief Galoppo also, and of course, Maine's Town Clerk of the Year is also, did I, did I spoil the surprise? No, my, my dear friend Twyla is, can't do it without her. You'll see on the bottom of page four, that's the listing of, of full planning committee meetings this past year. These are the, the meetings of the full group only. Please understand that there's literally dozens of other smaller breakout groups that meet throughout the year, if you work on the planning, on the parade group, or if you work on fundraising, where constantly, this is really a 12-month effort. And so those, those are, those meetings, and we just, by the way, just voted today, I believe, to move our full committee meetings, and which are open to the public, to the first Tuesday of every month at 2:00 p.m. right here at Town Hall, so make a note of that. So here are the areas on, on page five that the committee focuses on throughout the year, the parade, of course. And that, you know, that involves determining what the, the appropriate parade rules and registrations and procedures, and we process those registrations, and we go out there and market the parade, and, and try to encourage people to come, and particularly the, the paid parade attractions, which, which make it such a special event. The development of that lineup, and then finally the event logistics and planning, and again, Counselor Mason, and I'm glad it's her and not me, because I was down there, and it was nuts, and I'm not sure I would have survived, but she did a great job with it. Events, these are all the other sort of linchpins of this festival. The Spirit of the Wolf powwow, the Friday Night Public Safety Demonstration, the Friday Night Fireworks Display, the 5K Race, the Moxie Recipe and Chugging Contest, and of course, the River Race on Sunday. This is a group that just looks to line all of these folks up and ensure that everything's working according to plan, everything's scheduled correctly, and, and collaboration amongst those events when it makes sense. Entertainment, these are the stage acts, these are the, the bands and the magicians and the folks that appear both at Midtown and at MTM, and, and to some degree on Main Street, and it, we reach out, we engage those, you know, as you can imagine, there's contracts, these folks too are paid, and, you know, there's all these different logistics that go with that. Vendors and suppliers, these are the folks that line Main Street, some local, some from a broader territory, and that's another thing where we really have to determine, you know, the appropriate rules and procedures, and, and make sure that we're working with our health officer, if it's a food vendor, and all of those things, and that includes processing all those registrations. This year, I believe we had more than 70 vendors, so you can imagine, there's some work associated with that. Media and public relations, these are the theme and logo contests, as you know, we, we ask every year for entries to, to, to name the festival, and then we work with our local students on an art contest to design a logo, and so that works through media and public relations, and that's Deb, and she does a great job. It's the promotion of the festival itself, and the individual events and attractions, press releases, advertising, ongoing print and broadcast media, management of our website, moxiefestival.com. Product development and sales, this is real important, because we need to sell product in order to fund this festival, and so we make a very, we take that obligation very seriously, and we make to the best of our ability early, early on, you know, as early as January, if we're going to do T-shirts and how many, if we're going to, you know, search out in-kind soda donations so that we can then turn and sell those, and, and all of those things that happened this year. That's, that's a tough task, and we all work on that together. Finance, you know, we do develop an annual budget, and we'll be doing that very soon for 2012. And then organization and logistics, as you can imagine, I mean, everything right down to the porta-potties, we've got to make the appropriate arrangement to make sure that everybody involved in the festival has the accommodations they need, and everything we need to make a successful festival. Page six, again, I'm going to do my best to go through this very quickly, but these are what we view as the highlights. First of all, the weather, we can't take any credit for it, but, boy, it had as much, I think, to do with anything to get us off to a great start. Started to rain a little bit early on Saturday morning, I was pretty nervous, but the clouds parted, and we had perfect weather weekend for this festival, and I think it had a lot to do with the success. It was especially pleasing, because we had such a tough 2010, and I'm thankful I missed that one. Turnout. When I came and began to learn about this festival, I heard through public safety estimates, and admittedly, in exact science, but it's the best science we have, that, that three-day, this three-day festival may attract as many as 40,000 people to the streets of Lisbon and Lisbon Falls over the, that weekend. This year, in consulting particularly with Chief Brooks, we feel like we could be approaching or exceeding the 50,000 mark, and I can tell you really quickly, Yanath Clam Festival, 100,000, we're halfway there. Now, I'm not suggesting we're going to bring 100,000 people to your front yard, but that, it tells you, gives you a sense of how, what an opportunity exists for us. The parade, more than 80 entries, I believe, including our governor, our Senator Snown Collins, our Congressman Mike Micho, and obviously the Cora Temple folks who, who bring so much to the parade, and all the local community groups. Thousands of people lined that parade, and that was one of the indicators Chief Brooks gave me, is that he'd never seen that route filled in quite like this before. Events, again, we had a great powwow, and our friend Rick, who is, manages that and brings that all together. together, you know, was so thrilled with the reception he gets in this community, and this year in particular, and the involvement and the opportunity to educate and entertain folks. Moxie 5K Road Race, 480 entries this year, an increase of nearly 300 runners from just two years ago. The River Race, 175 canoe and kayak racers on Sunday. Amazing. Main Street, just an anecdotal piece. Somebody told me they had never seen the crowds linger as long in the day on that Saturday as they did this year. And again, economic opportunity for those folks downtown. Community group fundraising. We feel like it's a real highlight in that several community-based organizations, church groups, fraternal orders, service providers, they hold fundraising activities, and with all of those people in front of them, have an opportunity to raise funds that can support their program all year long. I think, and I say so in the report, that could alone be enough to justify the presence of this festival in the town, what it does for all those important community service groups. The MTM Center, again, for another year, we brought some programming up there. Our goal is to stretch this festival from Main Street all the way up to MTM. A particular focus was placed, an initial focus was placed on free activities for kids and families. That's really important to us. I'll talk about that again. Expanded Friday night activities. We had a great public safety demonstration with our police and fire departments down there. Sensational. And it brought more people, I think, combined with the activities at Midtown Plaza than ever before. Next item is very, I'm very proud of, and very proud of the person who's primarily responsible. Positive and free publicity for the Town of Lisbon. We were in newspapers, from the India Times, not just, not just the Times Record, not just the Lewiston Sun Journal. The Chicago Tribune, one of the biggest newspapers in the country, did a spread on us. The India Times actually carried a story. The India Times actually carried a story, positive one, on Lisbon. If we had to pay for that, if we had to go out and craft an image campaign out there to put goodwill out there in the world for us, we'd never be able to pay for it in 100 years, and it's all free. And again, Deb Wagner, so much a part of that. Electrical system for vendors. This is maybe one of the unknown things. Quickly. We had a system in place, obviously, we have to run power to many of these vendors. We had a system in place for many years that was handled by a local electrical firm. They donated services. The system itself, eventually, these are cables and plugs and all kinds of stuff. I'm not an electrician, but this, it wore out. It basically, it couldn't go anymore. And in fact, the electrician who had donated so much time over the years couldn't do it anymore himself. He couldn't justify it anymore, the time and the effort that went into it for him. And so the committee was then faced with a faulty electrical system and no electrician to service it. We overcame it, and we did it through fundraising, and we bought a brand-new series of cables and all the stuff we need to bring power to all of those vendors, more vendors than ever before. And we worked with a local electrician who put it all together for us at a very affordable price. I'll bring that back in just a second. The town commitment. Everybody says to me, well, the town appropriates $2,500 every year to support the festival, or at least they have in recent years. And I say, they take a much larger role than that. From this general government staff, the public work staff, all hands on deck response, the public safety officials and their departments on that weekend, there's, I think, there's absolutely no question about the commitment of this town to this festival. Community commitment. The dedication of these folks and the business community, and that fosters a partnership between, that's how public and private things should work. And it's from our corporate sponsorship campaign and right down to folks showing up unsolicited on the day of the event and said, what can I do to help? So it brings out the best in all of us in this town. All right. Financial report. Again, I talked to you earlier about accountability. And I want to tell you what we spent and what we raised and what for. And so I'm going to really quickly take you through this. Expense lines, these are, and there's more detail in the pages that follow. Expense lines. That's the entertainment. That's the bands. That's the parades. That's all of the things associated with the entertainment that day. The product, those are the t-shirts, and really primarily the t-shirts, the cost of producing those. The logistics. And that's staging. That's the electrical system. That's a lot of stuff like that. And again, there's detail in the report. Public and media relations. That's our website. That's ads that we take out in the paper. Awards. You know, we do give out awards. And for parade and all kinds of different things, and the Moxie Chugging Contest, there's a cost for that. Next page, page nine. These are the revenues. These are where the lines come from. Corporate sponsorships, municipal contribution, vendor fees, product sales, miscellaneous revenue. I'm proud to tell you, this year, through the work of these people, we raised $24,000 to support this festival. The expenditures as they stand tonight, $19,000, almost $20,000. Okay. But there's more to that story. So here's the expense detail on the following pages. I just want to point out, you know, you can see there on page 10, you can see, you know, the cost of this stuff, to bring the Cora folks, to bring the bands. You can see that there's a cost with that. I'm not sure everybody knows that. Product expense lines, a couple of points here. That's on page 11, top of page 11. The t-shirt production. We ordered 550 t-shirts this year, and that's the cost. And I just want to make a point, that was done with a company right down the street, a partner of ours in this festival. So that's an economic impact of itself. And secondly, one of our corporate sponsors, Coca-Cola of Southern Maine, gave us an in-kind donation at a wholesale price, $700 worth of product. And that ended up being mostly beverages that we could sell, yes, Moxie, but also other flavors, and some banners, which are important to direct people in the right place. So you'll see on the report, those are listed zero. That's because that was the generous sponsorship of Coca-Cola of Southern Maine and Canteen over in Lewiston, who gave us trucks and coolers at no cost. Logistics expense line, I just want to point out, the total cost of that electrical system, including Carol Curtis, who was, worked with us and provided services and paid services, and I think that's the way it ought to be, $4,300 on that. That's an expense that will go away next year and for the foreseeable future. Public and media relations expense line, now I'm on page 12, and as you can see, we pay about $750 roughly for the website. And it's a fantastic one, if you don't know it, moxiefestival.com. It has everything on it that anybody who's interested in this would need. And that comes at a cost of only about $750. I think that's pretty reasonable to host it and maintain it. And we make several updates over the course of the year. Advertising. We proud to take out ads to thank our partners in pull-out sections done by the Times Record and also by Turner Publishing, our friend Dan Smiley, who's also a member of the committee. And so there's a cost associated with that. Again, I would argue that's the way to do it. And there's some miscellaneous detail there as well in the media. And the revenue detail, our corporate sponsors, they're all listed there. I want to call out a couple. Coca-Cola of Northern New England, located in Bedford, New Hampshire, and they're the owners of the Moxie brand. And Coca-Cola of Southern Maine, they're a subsidiary, gave us, in essence, $2,000 plus this year to support the festival. Enterprise Electric, Jeff Kelly donated his time at no cost to us and his equipment to help us put our banners up, which is a really important thing. And we agreed amongst ourselves that we would recognize Jeff's contribution and designate him as a silver sponsor. Again, Town of Lisbon, next page, page 14, $2,500. It doesn't end there. Vendor revenues. Twyla's work, $5,900 in vendor fees, bringing vendors to Lisbon. And I've got more thoughts on that before I finish. Product revenues. T-shirts, we spent about $3,500. We made about $7,100. So it's, you know, nearly $4,000 that went to support this festival. Soda water sales, again, as I mentioned, in-kind contribution, $700 wholesale value, and it wasn't quite that because there were some banners enclosed or included in that. But we made a little over $1,000. And we didn't sell all of it. So hopefully, we will next year. And there's the t-shirt sales. We did them online. We did them at the town clerk. Our good friend George Roy at the Credit Union, Lisbon Community Federal Credit Union, sold them there, had his folks working on it on our behalf, and also bought some as well. And then the festival sales, the day of the festival, it was insane. We basically tapped out on those t-shirts. Fantastic. And I have some other thoughts on that. And then soda and water. Porta-potties reimbursement, I just want to call that out. That comes on page 15. That's part of the arrangement we have with our friend Rick at the Powwow. He pays about $1,000 annually, and I, how fortunate we are to have him be part of it and also to share in his good fortune with the folks that come through their gates. He shares a portion of his proceeds with us. And part of it is to reimburse us for porta-potties that we buy and station up there. So that brings us even, as we like to think of it. Okay. Next page is page 16, and this is really the big reason I want to come talk to you tonight. I said before, I hear from people, $2,500. The town supports it to the extent of 2,500. And I say that's, that's true, but it's much, much more. And as you know, all of the elements, as we've just talked about, of this festival come with a price tag. But there's something that's getting missed here, and I think has historically been missed. And we, as a committee, want to change that tonight. There's substantial costs to the town that have heretofore been unrecognized, as far as I can tell from anyone. And those costs are related to the direct cost of overtime paid to town employees, such as the town's police and public works department, who provide indispensable support to us and public safety and logistical services to the festival every year. But the cost of those services are borne by the taxpayers of Lisbon. And this is what we're here to try to change tonight. Without those services, we could not do this, do this festival the way we're doing it. And further, I should mention, I want to pause and say, that this also includes the services provided to us every year by the volunteer members of our fire department. And it's a little different animal than our police department, but still, without it, that's the indispensable public safety services that I'm talking about. And I just want to say tonight that, to thank them for everything they've done and do every year for us, just like we're thanking the police and the public works tonight. And I want to tell you, announce to you publicly for the first time, that today, at our first 2012 planning meeting, we voted as a committee, as a gesture of those thanks, to donate $500 of our surplus funds at this point in time to the fire department's ongoing 9/11 memorial work. And we're going to be awful proud to do that. We're looking forward to that. Let me go on. What we're saying to you tonight is we want to formally recognize and take as our responsibility the cost of those direct overtime costs to the public, to the public works and to the police department. And we want to include those in our fundraising efforts going forward every year. And here on page 16 is a quick representation of that. And this is work that I did with both Ryan Layton and Buttons and with Chief Brooks on assembling these costs very quickly after the festival. But as you can see, the public works crew who worked on Friday and Saturday and Sunday, their cost, about $1,870. Again, through the history of this festival, a cost borne by the taxpayer, sort of a silent cost that's not recognized. Town of Lisbon Police Department, it's all, just like the fire department, it's all hands on deck all weekend to make sure people move around safely, the cars move, people move safely. Their cost, $3,900, for a total of $5,800. And as this demonstrates, the true cost of the past festival has been considerably higher than the sum, any summary of direct revenues and expenses would have suggested. It's time to change that as a matter of policy. Therefore, the Moxie Festival Planning Committee proposes to reimburse 100% of these costs for the 2011 festival and commit to taking to the best of our ability the actions necessary to achieve full reimbursement in future years. Now, small asterisk there, we'll do our absolute best. And it's going to depend, again, the weather, you know, there's other factors, but to whatever extent we can, we're going to reimburse these costs as a matter, just like it costs to put a band on a stage, it costs to put a police officer on a curb to help someone cross the street, or direct traffic, or whatever he's doing. So hopefully, I look forward to, hopefully, you're going to respond to that and accept that offer on our committee's part. And so with the additional line, I'm on page 17. Now, with the additional line added to the festival budget, the 2011 expense lines then get revised, and the bottom line in terms of expenses now goes to $25,753.92 for this festival. Again, that's including reimbursing the town for the expenses that occurred in police and public works, and a new electrical system, and the services of that electrician, over and above, about $10,000 in expenses. So we had a tough nut to crack this year, and we did it. We're proud of it. I hope you are, too. Lastly, I would be remiss in mentioning, with not mentioning, that there is municipal staff time. Me, Twyla, Jody, Chief, others associated with this, but it's minimal. In my estimation, I went, I kind of tracked all the meetings we did, and I came up with a number of about 230 hours total over the course of the year. And I think you'll agree with me that that was well worth it, given the impact on the community and economic level. Hidden revenues, like we have hidden costs, we also have hidden revenues. And that's this human capital that sits with us tonight. These folks work, again, as I say, they come every month to the meeting, they work with me constantly on the phone, we're doing emails. Their time has value, too, and they bring professional expertise, which makes this a great festival. I'm going to estimate the private, meaning the residents and the folks who are business representatives of this community, that they spent a total of 370, 375 hours this year on this festival. And I'm telling you, that's conservative. But can you imagine if you had to pay for that? Even if you had to, even if you paid them federal minimum wage, which I believe is $7.25, that'd be another $2,800 in cost. And I think you'll agree with me, these folks and what they do are worth a lot more than federal minimum wage. So the donated time is a whole lot higher. Page 18, bottom line, cash flow. When I came last December 1st in the Moxie account, and a lot of this has to do with things being canceled the previous year and so on and so forth, but there was a carry-forward number at the, as of December 1st of about $6,350. We raised $24,157. We spent $25,753. That means, as we speak tonight, you accept our offer to reimburse the town, that we have available carryover revenues of $4,700. And based on my experience this year, that is plenty to get us rolling until we begin our next fundraising campaign and so forth. So that is plenty of us, plenty for us to do our work. I'm going to, just really quickly, next section is 19, economic impact. Community-based organizations and what that means to them. I'm not going to read these, but I'm just going to tell you, the folks at the Lisbon United Methodist Church tell us, Moxie is our largest yearly fundraiser. My friend Diane Netto over at the Lisbon Library, they support children's programming, like that summer reading program that's just exploding over there, they support with funds that they raise at the Moxie Festival. Cindy Schaefer over at the Boy Scouts Troop 109, they have other fundraisers that give them a great profit, but nothing raises as much money in a single day. It goes back to what I've said to you before. I could do nothing in this job that could have a greater impact in one day than this festival. And it's not just these nonprofits. And it's the opportunity, the economic opportunity that comes from having 50,000 people in our streets. And I got to tell you, top of page 20, Frank Anasetti, who is, provides me great counsel, and we just met today and had a great conversation again. And I tell you, when I read this testimony that Frank gave us, I just about bawled. The best Moxie Festival in all my 29 years of being involved. Frank's the guy who started it, started it with a book signing all those years ago, telling us now, this is the best one ever. And I think if you look at that, you can see Frank telling, they basically emptied out my inventory. That's the idea. Folks at Miller's Variety is, Moxie is always... Folks at Miller's Variety is, Moxy is always a great weekend for us. Dairy Joy says it's our biggest weekend of the season. It's great exposure for the future business for my store, for Chris Cornish of Drappel's Costume. She's not necessarily a business that you'd think would do well on a day like that, and she accepts that she doesn't, but she's out there and promoting with the idea, those eyeballs being on that product, they'll come back. Folks at Dunkin' Donuts, biggest weekend of the year. The folks at Max Kettlecorn, best Moxy forest ever. I thought it was interesting, Jeff Eldredge, the manager of Food City, John talked to him. Jeff said, well, we're, you know, about average two percent over, but six percent for the week following. And, and he said, that told him that people living here in town were having folks over, and they were all stocked up, so when the, you know, the festival was over, they were tapped out and had to go back to the market real quick. So, it tells us that, again, there's economic impact. And then, Rite Aid, one of the things that I haven't mentioned yet, we moved the Saturday parade, just logistically to make things work better between the five K race and the parade start, we moved it back to ten AM for the first time. And Rite Aid said, that was great, fifteen to twenty percent increase on Saturday morning for the folks at Rite Aid, because that parade time kept people in the area that much longer. Last bit. What are we going to do going forward? First thing we're going to do is we're going to do a continual review and improvement. What do we do well? What can we do better? That's the question we're going to ask ourselves every time we get together, because it's about making this event better. Volunteers and staffing, we've got a small group, hardy, but small. We need more help, folks at home, we need more help. And all you got to do is call me, and, and I'll put you on it, but we need more help. So we got it, we're committing to go out and find more folks. Festival growth, it's a question, not a statement, because, as always, this really depends on what the community wants. But I think there's opportunities for expanded coordination and collaboration between the partners. Here's a good example, this year, we connected the Powwow with the Chief Wurumbo River Race, and they both participated in each other's activities and then joined together for the parade. And it brought, it made it so much more of an enriching experience for both groups. And so we got to look for other opportunities like that. Expanded opportunities for the business community, as I mentioned. Even if you're not a retail business on Main Street, you have an opportunity here with these fifty thousand people. And it's on us, though, to propose solutions, to bring them solutions, to encourage them to do that, we're going to try to do that. Expanded community fundraising opportunities, more nonprofits, bring more down, more things for people to do, particularly on Friday night, that's something that, that is important to us. Increasing the diversity of food and craft vendors, we think can help grow this festival in a manageable way. And, we're going to reach out to the agricultural community, I talked to you about this the last time we were together, we're going to reach out to this, we've got some great farms in this community, and they should be part of this festival, if only to let people know they're there. But secondly, maybe it's an opportunity to move some product, and wouldn't that be great? And also, wouldn't that bring even more people to the festival? Secondly, the crafters, the main arc glass studio, I, I, I'm kind of kicking myself because it took me so long to get there, but it's a fantastic resource in this community, and maybe it can be the linchpin for a greater crafter presence. And then, expanded games, events and activities, as I mentioned. MTM Center, look, my wife and I were here all weekend long, and so I saw virtually everything that happened, and one thing I noticed is, it costs money nowadays, you know? If we're going to, if I, if I, you know, I'm, I'm lucky, my kids are grown, but if I, my wife go to an event, and we've got our kids with us, two, let's say we have two young kids, and they want to have something to eat, and they want, you know, this, and they want that, and that, in this economy, that's a tough chore for anybody, even who's doing well. But especially in our community, what about those who aren't doing well, but still want to be part of this community event? We can address that by expanding those activities at MTM to make sure that they have, that they can be part of this festival too, and maybe they can scratch a few, a few dollars and, and get a hot dog or whatever it might be, but they can also come to this festival without spending a dime. That is going to be a goal for us going forward, not only next year, but every year after. And, and finally, in sitting with Frank today, it confirmed, I tried to count backwards, it's difficult, there's no real definitive history of this festival, but next year will be the thirtieth anniversary, and Frank confirms to me that I'm right on that, of, of this great community institution. That's going to bring a special poignance to our planning efforts, and it's going to bring a special significance to that event. So that's something we're going to be looking at going ahead, and there's many, many more. I'll just tell you, we, as I mentioned, we went to the Yarmouth Clam Festival, gentleman who, who puts that on is a paid staff person with the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce, and got great ideas. John and I went, and it was, we were so energized and pumped from exchanging these ideas, and, you know, there's so much that we can do, but it, it's got to be done in a responsible, measured way, and that's what, we're going to make it our business to do. Thank you for your time, I know it took a lot, we've got a big story to tell, so.
Thank you, Scott.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
No, great job.
Any questions from council?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, and I'm telling you, Lisbon, it's, it's worth everything you're putting into it, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you to all the volunteers who put a lot of hard work and effort into all of this.
It's a good story.
All right, Twilight, the next item?
Under Council Orders, Resolutions and Ordnances, Order Two Thousand Eleven, One Seventy-Four, Route One Ninety-Six Sewer Line Replacement.
Ryan will address that, we've been talking about this several weeks before.
Good evening, as part of the two thousand eleven, twelve sewer budget, when we presented that, we discussed the need to replace approximately five hundred feet of sewer main on Route One Ninety-Six prior to that road being paved. We contacted contractors in town that do that kind of work to see the interest from the local contractors, and we had two that were interested in, in bidding on that project. Crafts Excavation bid thirty-six thousand dollars, and Longchamp Sun bid fifty-two thousand dollars. We had about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for two different projects that we need to do, one of them's a lining project, and one of them was this open trench excavation, and we're asking permission to move forward with Crafts Excavation to get that work done as soon as possible before it starts to get too cold.
Any questions from council? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I would, I would like to just bring up a point, I got a call the other night, because we have a construction company who doesn't live in town, but pays taxes in town, and hasn't been afforded the opportunities to bid on a number of our proposals. And I would like to recommend that we offer, Generalin and Generalin, who owns the property at the Shopping Plaza, and pays us a fairly good amount of taxes, the opportunity to bid on some of our projects, even though he doesn't live in town, he does pay taxes in town, and is a construction company. So I think he should be on our list going forward, and for this one, as an opportunity to bid on proposals as we go forward.
Ryan, do you have an objection to getting a bid from them? I mean, we wouldn't be able to.
Right now, yes.
We need to, really timely, we need to get this done right now.
It's partly that, but partly we've already publicized prices from two contractors, and, I mean, unless we put it out to bid, whole heart, I mean, and, and I would recommend if we're going to do that, that we would advertise publicly, and whoever wants to bid, from whatever community can bid. But the plan from the beginning has been to try to keep the, you know, the tax dollars, in this case sewer funds, you know, in town to the people that are, that are contributing to that. And Generalin and Generalin is not a local, you know, not an in-town construction firm, which is why they hadn't been, wasn't one that we'd considered, but I mean, in the future, there's no reason we can't add them to the list at all. I just have concerns with, with, I mean, we'd have to put the whole thing out to bid, I just can't go to him and ask him for a price.
You'd have to go back and re-bid the whole package.
Yep.
So what, when were we, when did they get this done, before winter, or is it next spring?
They were hoping to start tomorrow, Thursday.
All right, yeah, so it's very, we need to get it done if it's going to, before it freezes.
The, the only, again, we have some options, I'm not happy about it, but we have some options that we can address, that we can do, because the work that we're doing is not going to be, I mean, it's, the paving that we need to do in the roadway is going to be temporary anyway, it's going to be ground up next year. DOT has certain windows of when you can actually pave, and the paving plants are getting close to being closed, but I, I mean, we still have some time. And the work, we were able to realign where the sewer line was going to go, so it's underneath the sidewalk, which, the sidewalk is in poor shape in that location anyway, so this way where the pavement and everything we put down is going to be there, it's not like we're paving a trench in the road that's going to be then turned around and be ground up next year. So, I mean, we have some options, but I guess I'm, whatever direction you give me.
My recommendation is we put it back out to bid.
I agree.
I'm going along with that, too.
Thing of it is, if you can save money, it's time now to save it.
We'll see.
Yeah, we may end up spending more in the future, I mean, who knows what the bids will be next time around.
Just for clarification, though, what have we historically done as far as it goes for seeking bids? Do you just have a list of people that you send out?
We go talk to the local contractors.
You don't advertise it in the paper for?
Not generally, I mean, it depends on what the project is. I mean, in sewer replacements like this, it's a small project, and we just go to the local, I mean, used to always be Carl Houston Senior that replaced every sewer line in town, so I mean, we've expanded that by just going to all the, you know, excavation companies that are in Lisbon, but we can certainly go elsewhere.
Good, Fern? I guess it's, the question would be as timeframe-wise, I mean, as far as this bid process has gone out to the local people, and I do realize the concern that Generalin has, but the timeframe of us actually getting the bids back out and coming to another council meeting, whether or not that's going to, we are, the nights are getting colder and the days are getting shorter. One of the things that, you know, was a little bit of concern, I sat through the last water meeting, was the idea that they're hoping possibly to do something this fall also, and the idea of how many different constructions we're having One Ninety-Six at one time, if that didn't want to really happening at the same time, and they felt that probably ours would be happening first, whether or not that worked or not. But again, it's, I'm, I'm just concerned about timeframe-wise, I mean, typically how, I mean, the bid process, I mean, how long did this bid process take you? Was it a couple, three weeks, as far as what this?
Two weeks. I mean, it wasn't a formal, it wasn't a formal RFP, I mean, the whole nine yards that I would do in this situation, it was, like I said, I contacted the contractors that we do work with in town, some of them were too busy this year and didn't have any interest in bidding. Two of those companies expressed interest in bidding on the project, we met on-site, discussed the project in depth, and then they had a, a week to get a price back to me, and that's what you have here. If you want to do it again, then I will put together a formal RFP, we'll advertise it, I'll put it out, and I'll have something back for, for us, first meeting in October, I can't wait any longer, so.
I ask my question, is shouldn't we be doing a formal proposal and RFP anyway? I think that's part of our purchasing policy. Is it anything that we're bidding over, I think it's a five thousand dollar limit or whatever it is, has to go out and be in the form of an RFP, and has to have a minimum of three builders? I think if we read our person, our purchasing policy, you'll find that that language is in there that says we have to do that.
Historically, for repairs, we have not done that. And that's what this is, is repair, I mean, be that as it may, we, I mean, this, like I said, this, we can do it either way.
Spending that kind of money, I don't know that it's just considered a repair.
Mark?
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
The, I guess the question would be too, is, it would just be nice to know what our, what our policy is, I mean, if, because I know as far as for, when we talk about local vendors, you know, you know, what does classify a local vendor? I think if, if, on any situation that we looked at, at what, who pays taxes in town, that would actually open their.
We, we always have the right, according to the policy, that we can, we don't have to accept low bidder, and we can be preferred to a local business.
But that five percent that we usually give to a local business, now is a local business, a tax-paying business, or a local business actually selling, producing, doing?
I don't know.
Business locally, I guess that's what my question was to start with, is, is how does that be defined? You mean, because there is probably, even when we look at oil bids, there's probably many vendors that actually paid somewhat of taxes in town, I mean, give or take, so, I mean, I was just curious how we define that, so, maybe that will help us next time, I'm not sure, maybe it's something that Steve's going to have to give us some guidance on, when we do go to review the final bids, you know, who does get the five percent local discount or, or benefit, and who doesn't, I guess. On this bid, it won't make a difference, because it's a big, there's a lot more than a five percent difference, but.
If we do go back for a full bid process, would you think you'd be able to get it done this fall? I know you're running out of time.
Hopefully, hopefully, you know, the, one bidder on here, I believe, got the water, is going to be doing the water job, so, I mean, I'm sure he'll, he'll bid on this as well, but, I mean, if they're already doing the water job, I don't know, I mean, I think that we may have sealed our fate on who's going to get this job, but who knows? We'll put it out to bid and see if that's what the council wants us to do.
I'm willing to go along with that.
Who's doing the water job?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't know if anyone's under contract yet, there's been a lot of discussion.
There's one name that was used quite a bit at the water meeting.
I wasn't at the water meeting, so I can't verify.
Sounds like they actually are.
Firm we should be saying much more.
The.
Certain that we should be saying much more about it, if we're going to reopen it.
I think we ought to just put it out to bid, see if we can save it all, that's what it's all about.
How's the rest of council feel?
What do you feel, how's the rest of council feel about that?
I'd make a motion that we put it back out to bid like we have done in the past with the RFPs.
You have a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor of putting it back out to bid? And opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I have family members, so I'm not saying a word.
All right.
All right.
Put it back out for bids, and advertise it in the paper and everything, do the whole nine yards.
Problem.
Yep. All right, next item, Twilight?
Order Two Thousand Eleven, One Seventy-Five, carries and transfers.
Jessica will give that report.
I guess we can start with the carryforwards. This year, we're looking to carry forward seven hundred, excuse me, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and two cents. You'll see in your summary that I handed out just before the meeting, the revised one, that I've broken down the carryforwards into six categories, grants and donations, supplemental adjustments, self-funding programs, funds appropriated with the work not commenced, funds appropriated with the work in progress, and bonds, capital projects. A couple items to note on the revised copy that I gave you, under the self-funding programs, there's a line for general assistance in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-three cents, and this is for the Giving Tree and Heating Assistance Program. It was not on your initial copy. And also under self-funding, there should have been an additional two thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars and fifty cents under the Parks Department for the Admissions Fund. This is, this is the amount by which Beaver Park revenue exceeds its budgeted amount that gets carried forward into the admissions. Are there any questions with the carryforwards as you have them in front of you?
I'm sorry, where did you say the Giving Tree money was?
It is under the self-funding program, the O-five, five hundred, general assistance.
Okay, yep. And what was the other amount, the twenty-seven?
It was two thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars, and it's added into, under self-funding programs, under the O-four, four hundred, Parks Department, amount of nineteen thousand, six seventy-seven.
I was trying to figure out the discrepancy between the forms that we had of seven sixty-nine, and the new form you gave us was the seven.
Yep, those were the two.
Distracted and that, sorry.
That's okay. Are there any questions on what I, what we have listed for carryforwards? Any further clarification needed?
Mark, man?
Yes, go ahead, Fern.
This actually meets all the new requirements for the state of all the new carryovers, and the blank page that we looked at first time that was mandated in this one.
Yes, yes, it does. Okay.
Any other questions from council?
I will move on to transfers. Okay, we had a revenue shortfall of around three hundred and twelve thousand for fiscal year and two thousand and eleven. This is primarily due to the reframing of using the use of service, ah, excuse me, use of surplus commitment of two hundred and fifty thousand, so we, we did not have to use that this past year. We did have some overdrafts, the largest ones being Public Works Winter Account, primarily from an extended storm season, legal expenditures due to increased requests for council, bond orders, workshops, arbitration, and second opinion requests, and town engineer budget, which, that funding was actually emergency funding as it related to the well, the well contamination issues. The total amount that I am requesting to transfer is two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. This is a hundred and twenty, approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand less than what was requested last year. Of this two hundred and seven thousand, I am looking to transfer only eighty-seven thousand from overlay, which is only one point two six percent of the budget. which is only 1.26% of the budget. Do you have any questions on the list of transfers as it was presented?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just want to mention that I like the way this is laid out and the fact that you've shown that we're using and transferring within existing accounts where possible, and you're staying within the types of accounts and trying to do that money. It shows great, great level of detail that shows that we're being very accountable for our spending, so, and what we need to transfer.
Thank you. And that's all I have for carries and transfers. Pending your approval, we'll record them in the financials.
I would make a motion to accept the carryovers and transfers.
One second, Doc. All right, any further discussion from council on carryovers and transfers?
No discussion, just compliments in that it makes it much easier to read, to have it this way than we've seen it in the past, so I appreciate that.
Yes, it's a lot easier to follow this way.
Absolutely. Excellent, last questions.
All right, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, Jessica, let me give you your financial report. Can I take that out of order and go ahead to the financial report while she's ready, ready to go?
Okay. I have to apologize first off with your report. I actually got caught up in preparing the detail for the carries and transfers that I completely overlooked getting you the revenue side of your August report, so I apologize.
I asked that too.
But having said that, we are still early enough in the year, and a lot of the revenue reporting that you, that I give you is based on journal entries that I prepare, given our, our online banking and things of that nature. So, because of having to do the year-end and the work with the carries and transfers and the financial statements, which I am doing this year, that the auditors have usually done in the past, I haven't had a chance to get all of those journal entries prepared, so there really wasn't a lot that you're missing on that. But I will touch upon revenue impacts that have happened in August. You just don't have the sheet in front of you, so I apologize for that. But what you have in front of you is your report for August. At this point, there really isn't a lot of information to go on as far as projections to year-end. We're still early on in the year. The budget numbers have been updated in the trio, and we will hopefully have the carryforwards and transfers entered, giving you a complete report for review next month. The deputy tax collector is very busy, busy right now. 237 30-day lien notices for last year's taxes were mailed on September 19th, and the foreclosures on prior year taxes will begin October 18th, or 19th, excuse me. We are on the tail end of tax collection. As of September 19th, we have collected 90% or 4.2 million of the September portion of the tax commitment compared to last year at this time, where we were 68% collected, so funding is definitely coming in. Should you, the public or anybody have any questions with their taxes, please do not hesitate to stop in and see Kathleen Bailey. For the month of August, revenue sharing is coming in at 21% collected, which is right where we were at this point last year. And even though it's not reflected in your report that you have in front of you with the timing of the warrant, we have paid out our county tax, which was $574,000. Again, I'll repeat that this year's audit has gone extremely well, and the auditors are pleased with what they are seeing. I've been working on preparing the draft financial statements and should have those to the auditors soon for their review. Given the amount of time it takes to prepare the financials and the year-end audit work, I'm still in the processing, process of entering what has come in for revenues this year to date. But these include revenue sharing of $58,000 came in for the month of August. We had a homestead exemption payment of $129,000, and the urban rural incentive program payment of $26,000. Solid waste is 25% collected on their revenues, primarily appears to be due to cardboard and metal intake. And the rec department in Beaver Park revenues are coming in. Beaver Park is 40% collected already on their budget fees, on their budgeted fees. That's what I have for revenues. The expenses are pretty standard for this time of year, unless you have any questions for me, that's really all I have for you.
Any questions from council? Go ahead, Mark.
I have a couple of questions, just some, there's a number of accounts. We don't have to go through all of them, but the contractual services and repair and maintenance of operations. They seem to be, I mean, I'm, if I'm doing it correctly, because this is through August, right? So, it should be about six, if you just did a burn rate, it would be about 16% expended. And there's a number of those accounts throughout here that are, you know, 24, 25, or 30% expended already. It just seems a little high so early in the year, and I was just wondering, is there anything specific going on that's driving us to be so high in repair and maintenance so early and in our contractual services?
Nothing stands out off the top of my head. The, I'm trying to.
On the technology and I can, we, we purchase time in advance from our contractor. So, we were banking that, because we buy it cheaper if we buy a lump sum, so that could be part of that.
And you don't have to answer it right now. If you kind of just take a look at that maybe.
I'll take a look and get back to you.
Send me a little note or something on, or council a little note on why that's happening. And the only other question I had was on the O1-125 account. I'm assuming the.
Oh, the retirement?
I'm assuming that's Wayne.
Oh, no, that actually is, every quarter, I do a journal entry to true this up with what we have on the liability side. So, you'll see that increase substantially as the quarter end approaches, and then I do a journal entry to offset against our liability that we have going.
And then the only other question I have, O3-320. Do we really have, I think the 5200 account's named incorrectly.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, that should be contractual service.
And then the 53 would be some type of?
That's the repair and maintenance. Yep, sorry about that.
Nope. Didn't know why we had personnel services.
Yeah. Manual spreadsheet, not system-generated, so that would be neat.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? All right, looks good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, and our next item, Twyla.
Is order 2011-16176, an order regarding 231 Lisbon Street?
At our workshop, you discussed that piece of property on 231 that we had foreclosed on. You asked to have Roger draft an order regarding that and, and putting in some stipulations of the things we talked about. This is what we have. In order to move forward, we need approval, and we'll cut the quick claim deed and collect our funding. And Roger's here.
Read this for the record or anything?
Do we need to read this for the record?
Yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Well, you can have Twyla read it.
I think Twyla should read it.
You have Twyla read it?
Twyla can read it.
Because she's a professional.
Right, she is.
Be it ordered by the Town Council of the Town of Lisbon that the property designated as 231 Lisbon Street, more particularly described indeed from Casamia, Inc. to James Morial dated June 23, 2005, and recorded in the Anders Skogan County Registry of Deeds in Book 6385, Page 113. Also more particularly described as Lot 135 on Town of Lisbon Tax Map U19, acquired by the Town of Lisbon by various matured real estate tax and sewer user fee liens. Be returned to the prior owner, James A. Morial, by municipal quick claim deed in accordance with the following terms and conditions. All taxes due through and including the September 15, 2011 tax due date shall be paid in full prior to transfer. The March 2012 taxes due shall be paid on or before March 15, 2012. The debris, junk, and other unsightly material located on the property shall be cleaned and properly disposed of before June 1, 2012, and the site to remain clean and visually attractive. The appearance of the outside of the building will be improved either by painting or re-siding to be accomplished before June 1, 2012. The homemade sandwich signs previously used on the property shall be prohibited. The terms and conditions of the transfer, with the exception of the tax and sewer payment requirements, shall be enforced by the town's code enforcement officer as a code violation. If not complied with, it is further ordered that the town manager shall be and hereby is authorized to sign the municipal quick claim deed, transferring the property and any other documents that may be required to consummate this transaction and to authorize any code enforcement necessary to maintain compliance with the conditions of the transfer.
Thank you, Twyla. Anyone on council have any thoughts on this?
The only point I want to bring up is I think in the first term, I just want to make sure for the September 15, because I'm assuming that hasn't been paid yet. But I don't think there should be any penalty for being late on that September 15 payment. But other than, along with, with that understood, I would make a motion to accept.
I would second that as well. My question that I had was if Mr. Morial has seen this document and feels that he's able to comply with it.
He has not seen it.
He hasn't seen it.
Okay.
Should we give him the opportunity to look at it as well, to get his agreement that he's able to comply with it?
That was, Mark, may I, that was my question, whether legal has been in communication to actually discuss it at all. I guess it's pretty hard to discuss it unless we approve it, right? Once we approve it, then you can move forward to.
If we approve it, and for some reason he feels it's too onerous and he can't do it, and he can come back to us at the next meeting, and we can work something else out.
I think he'll need time to show it to his attorney. That this is what you read upon as a council.
And if it doesn't work out for you, Mr. Morial, at least just, you know, talk to your attorney, and talk to our attorney, and come back to us again, and we'll try to keep working something out, because we want to work with you here. That would, okay, well, they would get that for you.
We can provide that for you when the tax office is open, we'll give you a total cost and without the interest on the September 15 payment.
All right, so, all those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass 7-0.
All right, and the next item?
Order 2011-177, charter amendments, questions 1 through 8.
Okay. Now, we looked at those last time we were here. Does anyone have any further feelings about those? Yes, go ahead, Fern.
I would, Mr. Bowie actually gave us his concerns, and I think I was thinking, might, maybe any of you, if maybe you could actually come to the podium, maybe actually give us some recommendations of what, what. You'd mentioned the first part of it, the idea of the initial changes, but some of the, some of the other parts of it, you had some, some concerns. And I was just wondering if you actually had any recommendations how to, to remove those concerns, but yet actually still keep it in the nature of what we're looking to do. Tough question, I realize, especially on the spot, but.
The quick answer would be, I'm not sure that there is.
A quick answer?
Any way to do it. I looked at a number of charters that have language. None of them have anything as complex as what's being proposed. And my, again, my concern is that it's such a complex process that it may defeat the process. It dies by process. There are so many steps involved. Again, some people are gonna perceive it as purposely putting up an obstacle to, to trying to carry out the process itself. It kind of defeats the whole idea of citizen initiative. On the other hand, the intent, I assume, was to avoid situations where somebody could run and say, I don't like the way John Jones voted, and I want him out of office, and so do my seven friends, and here's a petition. Or I don't like the way he kicks his kids at the football game, or whatever. The two parts that I thought were kind of breakers were the outside official and the ethics panel, only because you're, if I'm interpreting the term validity there, you're asking someone or some panel to make a determination of whether or not the accusations are true or false, as opposed to whether or not the petition has wording that is correct for a petition for recall. And maybe that's just my misreading of that, but the, it certainly implies that you're looking for almost a court-like investigation and conclusion. And those are the parts that I think kind of cripple it as, as being a process.
If, I guess my question would be is, is the intent was to actually have a, an outside person and review it, to not actually determine right or wrong, but more determine that the idea that the town was moving forward in the right direction to warrant the idea of spending the, the money to actually put this up front for a vote. And I guess, I'm not sure if there's any other words that could be put in there. Do you feel, I mean, you've mentioned this before, but you don't feel like the Ethics Committee has really a role in, in any part of this in a sense of giving, giving guidance at all? And so that part of it would definitely be a.
Guidance is one thing, but what you've said there is to make a determination of guilt, yes or no. And it really questions the whole process. I'm not sure that three people or one person is gonna have the resources to go in and investigate and then draw a conclusion that this accusation is true or false in a timeframe of 10 days or 21 days.
Be very difficult. I don't, I mean, it wasn't, I don't believe that was the, the thought process that, the intent that we were looking for. And again, I'm glad you read through it, yeah.
Validity simply means, is it a correct petition? Because validity can be false statements, but they're logically correct. And in a legal sense, it'd be perfectly okay, but that's not the impression I got from reading it. It sounded more like it was looking for a determination of true or false. Are those accusations really true, guilty or not guilty? As opposed to proper form for a petition for recall. If it's only proper form for petition for recall, it's fine.
So, the idea of changing that wording would be, you think would be beneficial to us to try to? I mean, I guess I'm looking for more guidance as far as how we would go that route, but.
What I saw is need to define what was meant by validity. Because sufficiency is generally pretty clear. You call for certain things to be spelled out. Are they there in the petition? Therefore, the petition's okay. It's just as objective as saying, do you have the right number of correct signatures from registered voters? You can count them. They either do or do not meet the requirement. Do those statements meet the requirements for the criteria? Because that's the, that's part of the wording. If validity goes beyond that, that's when you get into that guilty versus not guilty business, which may be just a wrong interpretation altogether, but it's, it's not clear.
I guess my question would be to expand from that, is Roger, is there a way that we can actually clear that up to, to make that not be, whether he's listening or not?
Leave it like it is. Why change it? It's a citizens initiative. If the citizens of the community are willing to put the effort forward, why bother even changing it? That's there, that's there for them.
I think the key phrase here is in Section 831-2, A2. In what the external review, and it says here, "In order to determine the sufficiency of those reasons, reasons in accordance with the standards set forth in number one above." So, it refers back to the standards. They're not called upon to determine whether or not the allegations are true, simply that they are sufficient allegations.
And I think that's what our purpose was initially, is not for them to.
I thought that's what we wrote.
Guilty and not guilty, but more the idea of just making sure that we're moving forward in a proper manner.
It seems like that, to me, wouldn't address the issue that we were having, that were the complaints about the previous recalls, where that there was no substance to the claims, not that the claims weren't serious. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I think if you had this same process and we were just looking at what are the claims being made, then, you know, under this process, well, that would have been a sufficient claim, whether or not there's any evidence there. Go ahead, Roger.
The whole recall is a citizens initiative. This has nothing to do with the council. It has nothing to do with any law firm in the country. It's a citizens initiative. If they want to remove a counselor or whatever, they have that right. And here we are, as counselors tampering with a citizen's right. And that's why it was put in there. But it's not, it's not up to us to determine whether or not it's a viable reason. It's not, it's not up to us to determine whether or not it's a viable reason.
I think all we were trying to do was to make sure that we weren't spending taxpayer dollars frivolously, because the way it's written today, we can, anybody can say, "I want to recall Mark for a blue collar shirt," or Fern for a plaid shirt, or whatever it may be. And we were trying to put some logistics and structure around it so that there was substance behind why the person was being recalled. And not that we're trying to take a citizens' initiative away, but that we wanted it to be for, I don't want to really use the word valid, but for appropriate reasons, not end up wasting four or five thousand dollars on a vote that nine times out of ten doesn't turn out.
Go ahead, Roger.
If, if the citizens are willing to collect the signatures that requires to remove an individual from the council, they have to stand out there and collect signatures, and it takes time. And they're not going to go out there and do that for an unjust reason. They had their own reason.
Oh, yeah.
I would have to differ with you there.
Well, that's because, that's because you don't agree with what they tried to recall you for, Mike, but the fact still is that somebody did.
All right, but let's state the substance of the question here, yes.
One of the, one of the concerns we have, Roger, that I had concerns, was some of the original people that crafted this in the charter really kind of made mention that it probably, maybe our attempt is to put too much substance, but before there was not enough substance, it was actually just a very vague written, um, part of our charter that really didn't have a lot of description and a whole lot of, uh, guidance. And I think that's what we were trying to do, is not the idea of, uh, pollute it, but the idea of trying to make it a little more defined. And, um, I appreciate Mr. Bowie's seven four, because I believe he was one of the people that originally worked on the charter and, and, um, I mean, that's why I value his opinion highly, because he's actually has the, the spirit of what it was originally, and that's why I asked him. And he did mention the idea, I believe, and maybe you can expand on more, the idea of the basis of the petition, you actually thought that wasn't a, wasn't a bad, bad factor adding in there as far as for trying to get some, some, a little bit more description in there. But again, it's, it's the idea of, you know, we were trying to, to improve it, not actually ruin it, but yet, we don't want to do that.
In, in paragraph two, how would you change the wording to remove the word validity?
Where is the word validity?
The examiner shall have the full authority to conduct such investigation as is deemed appropriate to determine the validity of the reasons stated on the recall affidavit. About halfway through that paragraph.
About a third of the way out from item three.
Let's use the word sufficiency, which is the word we used before. Because that's what you're actually doing. I agree, that's a bad word. I think that'll take care of that problem. And I guess maybe an analogy by way of explanation can be made. When you draw a complaint, bring a matter to court, the complaint has to be sufficient. It has to state a cause of action. And all we're asking here is that the petition state an adequate reason that falls under one of these categories. The examiner's job is simply to look at that and see if, in fact, it does, if the person against whom the petition has been filed, or the initial paperwork has been filed, has some problem with that and wants it reviewed by an outside agency. This really isn't very nefarious, folks. If it gives you that much heartburn, take out two, three, and, uh, two and three.
Yeah, I mean, one issue I have with the, the process here is that the, the people filing the recall petition have no ability to appeal in the way that the person being filed against does. So if someone files a petition against me, I can appeal it to the Ethics Commission and then to the court system, but in this process here, the people who file it, if they get ruled against, have no ability to appeal that.
Oh, yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Uh, where is that? I've not seen that.
Says appeal.
Yep. Officer or official being proposed for recall, okay, or the recall committee, okay.
That's right. So if the, if the examiner says, "No, you haven't stated sufficient grounds here," and the petition committee says, "We think we have," then it goes to the, uh, Ethics Panel, and the Ethics Panel job is very clear. It says to determine whether or not the decision of the examiner is correct. Nothing more.
Not to actually prove right or wrong, but basically just to...
None of this is about proving right or wrong. I mean, again, the, the language in your complaint is the vehicle by which you get into court. At some point in time, you're going to have a hearing in front of a fact finder to determine the truth and whether the allegations are, are true or false. In this particular case, we're simply asking, the person against whom it's filed is asking, that somebody look at this and say, "Does this, in fact, state a situation that falls under these categories?" With regard to improper or unlawful execution and so forth. That's all they're doing is, you know, if, if you come in there and you say something to the effect that, um, one of the counselors has, um, embezzled money, well, that's going to be real difficult for you guys to do, okay, without some sort of factual, uh, exposition of how that occurred, because guess what? You don't handle any money, okay? So that's the kind of thing we're talking about. If there's an accusation of that nature that clearly isn't one of these things, that's what you're asked, being asked to review. And the review is simply to determine that it falls under one, that the allegations fall under that category, not whether they're true or not, simply that there is an initial, uh, examination of what is being, what the, what the officer's being accused of. That's it.
Mr. Bowie, the idea of taking that word and changing it, does that actually change that at all for you, or is that, I guess...
Sufficiency in place of validity?
Yes.
It makes all the difference in the world.
Okay.
Because so much of this is based on interpretation, and when you use words like investigate and, uh, validity, it just, it's going to conjure up images of some kind of a, a...
Trial.
Trial, some kind of a criminal investigation. Sufficiency has a very, uh, clear meaning, and it's very objective.
So you think that change would be a benefit?
Then it just leaves the question of the timing, is it just, you know, how much time do you want to...
Be able to do that.
Is that a delay that's going to be counterproductive or not?
With, um, may I, ma'am?
Just go ahead, Frank.
With, with changing the wording of this, does it actually change the idea of it, the public hearing part of it, to actually have to have that reviewed at another public hearing, or it does not?
That's why you have a public hearing, is to get employed, so that the changes need to be made, you can make.
Okay.
All right, anything further from council? All right. I believe we need to take a vote on each of these individually. That's my understanding.
There you go.
Do we?
Do we?
No, we do, okay? All right.
It's a surprise.
You do need to stipulate that...
The change, right.
That's what needs to be made in the assembly.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to accept the Charter Amendment with the modification to question eight, question two, changing the word from validity to sufficiency.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll, I'll already second that. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? And opposed?
Five, two.
All right.
Order pass.
We'll move to the next item.
Okay. Order two thousand eleven, one seventy-eight Budget Referendum Advisory Question.
This is a question on the budget referendum. Uh, this is, uh, need to be voted on, to be put on the ballot.
All right, and that's, do you want to read that?
Chairman, would you like me to read the question for you?
Yes.
This is now therefore be it ordered by the Town Council of the Town of Lisbon, that an advisory referendum be submitted to the voters of the Town of Lisbon at the municipal election scheduled for Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand eleven. The advisory referendum to read as follows. Do the voters of the Town of Lisbon wish to vote on an amendment to the Town Charter that, if enacted, would require voter approval at a referendum election for each annual municipal budget?
Any discussion on that from council?
No, I make a motion to accept it.
I'll second that.
Yes, go ahead, Roger.
Would that include a, a department by department in the question?
It just, this just states that to vote on each municipal budget, I think if it comes back as a, as a yes they want to, then we have to go decide how we're going to make that decision.
To make the actual amendment, right? Yeah.
Could we possibly have some kind of a, you know, just information there that would allow people to indicate how they feel on that, to get kind of a straw poll at the polling place?
So that they would want to vote department by department, one way or the other, how they feel?
I think we have to determine if they want us to do it before we determine how to do it, that's all.
There's a lot more to it than just putting...
That's what you'll get in public hearings and all those things, you get feedback on.
And they have to put in...
This is just like a straw poll.
If it fails, what are you going to do with that?
Right. It's a lot of work to get something that's workable there, but I think it's a good idea to ask people how they feel about it. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? And opposed? And abstaining? All right.
Okay, six, six, zero, one.
Or we'll say, you can abstain, if you have a specific reason.
Because I think it's nonsense.
That's a no vote then, Roger. Are you voting no?
I'm going to abstain.
You have to have a valid reason.
Need a valid reason to abstain.
Because I feel it's nonsense.
That's not a valid reason to abstain, Roger.
Okay, then, mark it down what you wish. I am abstaining, abstaining from a nonsense vote.
All right, let's go on to the next item then.
Okay, the next item is order two thousand eleven, one eighty. I'd like the chairman to notice that Councilor Rochelle has notified the clerk pursuant to section seventy-four, two oh one.
I think we missed one, seventy-nine.
Did we miss one?
Seventy-nine, yep. For the fire department. She's sitting right up there.
Oh, look at that. Order two thousand eleven, one seventy-five Fire Department Street Closure Request for World Trade Center Monument Ceremony, sorry about that.
Chief Gallopp will, uh, address this request.
Good evening. I don't know if everybody was abreast of, of the fire department's, um, actual accusation of a piece of the World Trade Center, but that was delivered about two weeks before, um, nine eleven, the tenth year anniversary of nine eleven. Um, we, we chose basically not to try to rush everything and try to, um, make, um, you know, rash decisions in trying to figure out how we wanted to present this piece and everything else. So what we tried to do is what we're trying to do is we're going to have it unveiled during our kickoff of, of Fire Prevention Week on October ninth, a Sunday, October ninth. And we're going to have a, a ceremony to do that, and with that, we're asking to possibly be able to, um, to close Village Street off for a, a short period of time. We don't know how many people we may get there, and traffic-wise, we'd probably shut that off and reopen it, of course, as soon as we can. It's kicking off our Fire Prevention Week. Lisbon Emergency is also going to have their new quarters open so that people can come in and check that out, so we will have foot traffic going back and forth across, across Village Street as that goes. And also, it's a formal invitation for you guys, for you as the council, to, to actually participate or, or come in.
What time is it at? The time isn't on here.
It's, it'll be at one o'clock is, is the ceremony, at one o'clock.
You want to close the street from twelve to three?
I want to close the street from twelve to three because we don't know what, you know, what the influx of, of foot traffic and everything else is going to be.
Is there a roundabout way to get...
There is, we can, we can actually detour up Park Street, they can take Winter Street and hit Pine Woods Road from there to go up further, and then we'd actually do Pine Woods Road so that they can go up and hit Winter Street and go around us that way. Um, we're going to try to keep Gartley so that we can use Gartley also just for, for the ceremony part of it, um, and then open Gartley Street right up after that so that, um, that actually any of the, the one ninety-six traffic can actually turn down Gartley right there at the corner and go around the school by the, by the Baptist Church and Gartley Street, so.
We'll make a motion that we allow the street closure on October ninth from twelve to three P M.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, and the next item?
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that Councilor Rochelle had notified the clerk pursuant to section seventy-four, two oh one, E six C of the Council Working Rules, that he acknowledges a conflict of interest involving the poll permit for Houston Street for the following reason. This new poll is being installed to change the type of power to Fern's auto body shop from single to, uh, three-phase power, which is needed to run certain equipment. He will abstain from voting and discussion and will no way attempt to influence the decision of this council. So order two thousand eleven, one eighty, CMP poll permit, Houston and Main Street.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion from council? All right, and we're not paying for this, it's CMP is paying for this, so it's not a burden on the town taxpayers.
No, you are.
He pays, yeah, that's why he's involved. Well, as long as we aren't.
As long as the taxpayers aren't covering it, yep. All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, six, zero, one. Councilor stands.
All right, and the next item?
Is under seat, Town Manager's report.
Um, I had a request from one of the counselors to, uh, list all the roads where we've been removing lights, uh, and I put that in your report. It's, uh, Falwell Street, Huden Road, Forton Road, Granview Street, Webster Road, Upland Road, Ferry Road, Pine Wood Roads, Village Street, Main Street, and Summer Street. Um, those have been completed, uh, CMP was very slow in getting to that. Uh, we have had requests, uh, about us to relook at that, and we've told everybody who is concerned about losing a light, most of these on rural roads, except for, well, on the other part of Main Street. Uh, once those are completed, uh, we're going to, uh, sit down and get a review and sit down with the people that have made the request to put them back up and, and just see if it's warranted. Um, we wanted to wait till it was done. We have another whole list that we'll be presenting. Uh, well, the first one is one ninety-six, we're removing thirty-six lights from, uh, one ninety-six, and we'll see how, uh, that works. Um, hopefully, uh, this will fill us into what we had budgeted for. We were a little bit late to have a CMP get things done, but, um, so that's the street. If anybody has any questions, just give Ryan Layton a call or myself, and we'll, and we'll address that. Uh, I just want to let the public know that the, uh, Project Canopy, uh, the Trails Committee ordered a bunch of trees that were given to us, and, uh, so they'll be, um, placing those along the trails. Uh, I've scheduled a workshop for October or eleventh on the road ordinances. Roger assures me that he can have all his recommendations. We pulled stuff out of the files from Twyla's office, which has got a nice neat book of what actions were taken on each road, when they were done, and what kind of road it was, so we're working on that, and we should be able to get through that in one of the workshops and then present it to you on the, uh, eighteenth, so we'll be ready for our budget process. Ordinances, um, the wellhead protection ordinance obviously is done, access management. Uh, there was, there was some discussion about other ordinances. Um, just to give you a quick update, this Thursday, there's a workshop or, for the, uh, planning board. Now that these other things are done, they're going back to their land use ordinance, which deals with zoning, and, uh, we'll, uh, hopefully get to that, and they'll pass that at one of their meetings in October. Uh, but they're going back, it's been a while since they revisited that because they had to wait, so, um, if anybody wants to attend that workshop, it's, uh, it's this Thursday. Ordinances, um, we, I know we talked about a, a draft for property maintenance ordinances, um, some language changes on sign ordinances. If anybody has anything they'd like to bring forward, this would be a good time of the year to start looking at those before we get into the budget process in March. Um, so if you have anything that you want to address, any recommendations or changes to ordinances, let me know. If you want to revisit some of these, um, other items, uh, the Downtown Revitalization Committee talked about having some signage guidelines within the main downtown areas, not just Lisbon Falls, but Lisbon as well. So these are things, just let me know as a council, and, and we can move forward on that. Um, I got a visit today from Western Transportation. I, I knew that Patrick Christensen was going to visit me, uh, because as part of the AbcoG Finance Committee, we were told that they had a shortfall in their funding from federal government, one of the grants that they received, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, they didn't get as much money in their current budget, they work on October one to September thirtieth fiscal year, so they were fifteen thousand dollars short... 30th fiscal year. So they were $15,000 short on taking care of our end of the bus service. That's what they do for us. They've brought to me a schedule for some changes, and I told them that I would bring it to you tonight, but we'll schedule it to talk about it at one of our council meetings. I'll get you the ridership numbers, so you have a really good idea of how many people use the bus service, and a list of what recommendations they're changing to try to meet their budget needs. It's going to impact the number of times the bus goes back and forth to Lewiston or wherever else they take them. So just a heads up on that, and I'll get you that information real soon. Hopefully, we can help those who are there. I was going to talk about our town clerk, but I'm going to let Gina talk about our town clerk and what we did last Wednesday.
I had the honor of attending the ceremony where Twyla was presented with her really cool plaque. Her and I have had a little joke going on all week, so anyways, we were very proud of Twyla. There was a group of about, oh, 11 or so of us, I guess, that were able to go, and it was a large group of her peers that were there, and a recommendation letter was sent. And these are just some of the things that Twyla has achieved. She's an archival grant writing workshop. She's attended those, election management. She is a certified Maine clerk. She's an international certified clerk, a lifetime certified clerk, international master municipal clerk, and she is one of only two in the state of Maine that holds that distinction. And there was a list that went on a mile long of things that Twyla has accomplished. And those of us that have worked with Twyla and have lived in town for many, many years know that Twyla does a lot of good things. She's very helpful here in the town office. She's one of the veterans, and she knows the ropes, and I know she's very helpful to Steve. And she's also been very helpful as far as being involved with Moxie and just being a mom and a wife, and, and she does a great job at that. We're very proud of her, and we just want the town to be proud of her also, and we should be very, feel very lucky to have her. Thank you, Twyla.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right. And the next item, Twyla?
Is under appointments. Order 2011-181, Board of Assessment, one member.
I make a motion to reappoint Richard Malone.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? And opposed?
Order pass, seven, zero.
All right, and the next item?
Counselor Communications.
All right, does anyone have anything? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I got a couple things. One is, I know I missed the workshop on the wage salary that we went through, and I was just wondering, was there, during that review, was, was there a view done and presented to council on the wage survey comparison and the justification for those increases? So do we compare apples and apples and stuff like that as to what those wage comparisons were and everything? I mean, I'd like to see a comparison of that, to see that we're giving out the right money for the right people for the right scope of work, and make sure we're comparing apples and apples and all of that stuff. Just a suggestion on my part. The other thing I have is, the water department, do they have to send things out to bids?
No.
They don't?
They don't have any policies or bylaws that require them to do that.
So they can spend their money however they want?
Yes, they can.
They don't have to save the water people any money by having to go out and get three bids or whatever, and they can pick and choose who they want to bid to. It seems like that should be changed in some way. I don't know if we can assist in that in any way.
They have a charter.
Could it be a charter change?
Their charter change, because they have their own charter.
Right.
And then the other question was, I heard that dump stickers were no longer going to be available at the dump.
We did, we did change that, yep.
And I think we should change that back.
So I hear.
Oh, not good, I'm sure.
I think that's a good idea.
We can certainly take a look at it and revisit that.
I understand, I think, why you guys wanted to do it, because you're looking at...
Tightening.
Tightening the financial controls on how much money's being handled. But they're going to handle money anyway. I think what we should look at is tying them some way into our software system here at the town office, so they can do the deposits online, and maybe make it such that receipts don't get printed unless it goes through the computer, right? Just to try and put some additional controls in place. I mean, you can never stop anything if they really want it to happen. And I'm not saying those guys are doing that by any means.
No.
Right? But I mean, I know we've had an issue or two in the past, and we've tried to change, make some changes in that. And I think that's why you guys were looking at that. But I think that's a little bit too much disruptions to the community for that, and we should potentially look at some different controls in that area.
I think that's some very reasonable opinion. Yeah, we talked a little bit about it, and I think it's, it's something we can definitely do. We've been networking our Trio software throughout our buildings, not just here. And I don't think they have it up there, but it's something that we've been talking about doing. It's just a matter of them being able to get to the cash receipting, which is not difficult at all. Just buy them a cash receipting machine, little star printer. So I'll make that recommendation to Jessica and we'll set that up.
And we'll start at least by this weekend of...
So there's not rioting at the transfer station?
I mean, even if we have to supply an extra hand or something, so that if you're shorthanded down there or whatever, for somebody to take the cash or whatever.
Yep.
You know?
Last weekend, I think, transfer people were...
All right, that's all I have. Okay, anyone else have anything?
I have a couple. Just to add to what Steve spoke about with the signage, the signage is very important. It's something that, one of the biggest complaints we've had with different things with Moxie is, you know, to signify where parking is, where directional type things, how to get here and there, you know, where historical sites are. You know, this is the Moxie store. It's pretty obvious. But, you know, just historical sites, directional signs. We do have some. Some businesses pay for their own, but there are things that are needed in both downtowns to clarify where parking is and what things are allowed in what areas. So that is something we really do need to look at.
I can just, with the report that we looked at, the envisioned Lisbon, that was one of the things that came out in that in terms of having better signage, and I think it's worthwhile looking at.
Right. And in getting something that's tastefully done in uniform and, and, you know, maybe getting some of the stores that don't have signage to, you know, go in at the same time. And so that's, it's very important, and it's something we do need to work on. And I just want to say many, many thanks to Ross Cunningham and his group, the promotion committees. It's a spinoff of the Revitalization Downtown Committee, but Ross does a lot of work throughout the years, the year, and he does several things for us. And this coming weekend is the Third Annual Harvest Festival. It's down at MTM. It's a small, little family festival. A lot of different groups come in. Some of the groups from the high school do a little bit of fundraising, and they have games and things like that. They have a couple of kids bands, from what I can gather, that are going to be playing at the Pavilion, which is the stage area down there, which is just a great, really great place. We've done a lot of really fun things down there. But that's this weekend. It's from 12 to 4:30 down behind MTM, the grassy area. And I've been there the last couple of years, and it's been a lot of fun. The kids enjoy it. I think one year, the farmer's market was there. There's a bake sale. There's mini golf. There's trucker chicken, which is always fun, and a bunch of other things, face painting, things like that. So if you get a few minutes in the afternoon, just stop down and say hello. Ross would definitely appreciate it because he works very hard to do these things. And of course, upcoming a few months, it's not that far away, very merry Main Street. It's something we always enjoy, and we have a great time that evening in downtown Lisbon Falls. So just keep those things in mind. Thanks.
Mike, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Fran.
I just want to add also to Scott's presentation. That was a very...
Outstanding.
Very entertaining, to say the least, but actually very, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes, and Moxie is very, it's not a very small, small project. And I'm glad to see Scott's excited about it and moving forward with it, because it could be looked at as a burden quite easily, I think, if you didn't have the right mental and right thought process going in. And the whole group, I think, they've done a great job, and I'm sure they will. And again, I was, I mentioned about the harvest...
Thank you.
You see the signage down Main Street?
You can mention it again if you want to.
He's putting it out there, so it's kind of nice that he has a little signage out, so that's going to happen. I couldn't mention it earlier, but I just wanted to respond back to Doc, just to let her know that the poll that we are putting up is something we're paying for. It's $10,000 CMP charges now to put up a poll and about 100 feet of wire. CMP does not give anything for free anymore. And the street light up front, we do pay for. So again, CMP doesn't give anything out for free, so it is, everything has a price tag.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else have anything they want to add? All right, I'll just say again, thank you to Twyla, and congratulations on that. You helped out a lot here at our meetings, and I really appreciate the help you give us. It's not just out front there, but right here every Tuesday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further? What's our next item?
To adjourn?
Exactly. All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second? I'll second it. All right, all those in favor of adjourning? And no opposing votes?
Order pass, seven, zero.
Yep, we need some signatures here.
And I still need one signature on the warrants.
Eight fifty-five.
I don't know who's going to shut the stuff off, because I think Ryan's calling, right?
Yep.
You know how to do that?
I'll run off until I get your signatures, people on the council there.
That must be tough with all the stuff you've got.
That should be all of it there.